Recording in progress.
All right, a hereby call to our the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, September 19th, 2022. We just concluded our EDA meeting prior to this, and so we are moving right into the City Council meeting. We'll note that the roll call stands as called for the EDA with all members present. The only change in our cast of characters up here at the DAS is we changed out attorneys. Our EDA attorney has been replaced by our city attorney, Mark Goggan, once again at the end on my right, and we still have with us Saverback Olson, the Assistant City Manager, on my left. With that, we will also forego the Pledge of Allegiance because we took care of that at the EDA. Next then is approval of tonight's council agenda. I'll check with staff. Are there any staff requested changes?
No, Mayor, there are no changes.
All right. Are there any changes requested by council members? Or I guess we don't have a consent agenda, so nothing to remove. Hearing no changes then. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening, and I did forget to mention for those who are in the council chambers, if you do have a cellphone, make sure you either silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And with that, we will move to a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda but may be either related to city business or of interest to people in the city. We will have opportunities for members of the public to speak on agenda items as they come up, but we do always want to start each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to speak, as I said, on items either related to city business or of interest to people in the city. This would apply to people who are participating remotely as well. If you do wish to speak during this portion of the meeting, you would want to use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and let us know. Do we have any remote participants?
We do not.
We do not. All right, well, then we will move right into the rest of the meeting. And note that there is no public comment at this time, and we don't have any recognitions, donations, or items removed from consent, so we can proceed right to our business items. Our first business item is item 7A, which is to receive recommendations from the Finance Commission related to the 2023 budget tax levy and proposed 2023 to 2042 CIP, or Capital Improvement Program. We'll invite the members and representatives of the Finance Commission up for this. Are they here for the CIP policy revision part? Or are they here for all of it?
They're here for their for number one.
All right, come on up. Just as I was introducing you or asking you up, I was realizing, oh, my gosh, maybe you weren't here for this part of it.
Hello. Thanks for having us. I think we wanted to start out by thanking the Finance Director for all the hard work on the budget and the City Manager. We were impressed that they were able to keep the projected tax levy down compared to other cities. We were impressed with 7%, but I think we thought that was still a high tax increase for people in kind of a difficult year when everybody's dealing with inflation and probably increased county taxes and school board taxes. So what...
So.
There we go. So specifically, we voted for a recommendation that we felt it would be better to get the levy down to a 6% to 5% range as opposed to the 7% currently. We did ask lots and lots of questions about specific areas and had lots of really good information about things that were worked on really hard, but we did feel that it would that we recommend, we wanted to recommend that it get down to 6% to 5% to lower that new tax increase.
We were impressed by the fact that $4 million of reserves were used to help to balance this year's budget. We did end the previous year at a relatively high point in our general fund cash reserves at 46%. So we feel as though, together with that $4 million reduction, there might be room to move us even closer to the 5% to 6% that we're proposing or suggesting that the council consider.
All right. And that's so, Will, if that's all right with you, we'll see if the council has any questions for you or wants to delve into your discussions a little more, and hopefully you can represent the views of the rest of the Finance Commission. Councilmember Atton?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. And I read the notes from your, the draft notes from your last meeting, and yes, there were a lot of good questions going there. You kept Ms. Petrick going. I don't believe I read that there were any specific recommendations for things to cut back, correct? More, it seems that it is leaning towards looking at one-time dollars from reserves.
Correct.
Understanding that each percent's $250,000.
Correct.
Of each percent of the levies, $250,000, and some sort of new revenue or cuts.
Correct.
Any other questions or feedback? Councilmember Strawn?
Can you give me a, I did reach out to Ms. Petrick about this particular item, but can you tell us what the per household difference would between a 6% and a 7% per month?
I'm not sure that I have that myself.
That was actually sent out to the council on Friday, and it equates to slightly over a dollar per month difference.
So about $12 per year would be the difference between a 6% and a 7%?
Correct.
And we have the reduction occurring in the EDA funding in that particular tax piece as well. Do we know what the percentage on that is?
I don't have that.
There was a small decrease proposed.
So less than a dollar, even if we were to keep it at 7%, it would be less than a dollar increase per average home rate per month?
Median.
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 Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify that, I think that the $1 is the difference between the 6% and the 7%.
Correct.
Just so folks at home are tracking that, in case they are thinking that it's a total of a dollar to get up to 7%. It's a little more than that, but as was mentioned, I think it's roughly about $10 a month, if I remember right.
Yeah, slightly under $10.
Right. And that's at the 7%?
Correct.
All right. Other questions or comments from members of the council? And once again, this is a recommendation. We will be, I believe, taking action at our next council meeting in terms of setting the preliminary not to exceed, so we've got some time to weigh this recommendation as well as other factors between now and then. And then, of course, we can go down from there in December, but we can't go up in terms of the levy. And of course, the budget can be adjusted either way, as long as it's not raising the levy again. If there aren't any other questions, I do want to also express appreciation to the commission for looking at this. And, you know, I think one of the things we always struggle with is definitely looking at using, you know, reserves for one-time expenditures, because if you want to continue those expenditures going forward, you do have to fund those in the long run. You can't necessarily continue to use reserves unless somehow your reserves continue to grow. But by our experience, when you use reserves a couple of years in a row, your reserves go the other direction, generally speaking. So it's worth considering, and I do know that historically, this goes back probably 15 years, the city used to have what was known as an Inflation Reduction Fund, which was sort of a similar sweep fund to what we have now, although it was not exactly the same, and I won't get into the details of all that, but it was, you know, the purpose of that was to attempt to reduce levy increases, particularly in years where there was a lot of inflation and costs. And the idea being is that that, those costs aren't normal, and so the use of reserves may be appropriate to do that. I do, you know, in those situations, I do kind of wonder if inflation ever deflates and you can, you know, go back, you know, you can just not use that funding next time around and be okay. It doesn't seem to work that way. It seems to only go up, and then maybe just up less next time. But so we'll have to figure that out. But I do appreciate the recommendation, and I think it's important that we are conscious of the taxpayers and the impact, because certainly, not only are we seeing the impacts of inflation, but our residents and businesses who pay our taxes are as well. Anything else from the council? All right. We do have our second item related to the commission as well, and I don't know if you want to stick around for this or leave all the pressure on Ms. Petrick, but we have some recommendations from the commission related to adjustments to our capital investment policy. Thank you also for working on that. I'll turn it over to Ms. Petrick, probably to introduce this item.
All right. So the city has a capital investment policy, which was last updated in May 2019, and its best practice recommendations that you should periodically review your policies and update if necessary. And so the finance, I brought this to the Finance Commission to consider some changes. The first change being on page two of the policy where, with regards to the Street Infrastructure Replacement Fund, the current policy has categorized this as a permanent fund whereby the interest proceeds are only used for the stated purpose, and the cash reserve amount should remain between $8 and $12 million. I performed a very detailed analysis of this fund because it is no longer operating as a permanent fund and has not been for several years. And we are talking specifically about the Street Improvement Fund, no other bonded capital funds. And in fact, we have, we started putting a tax levy into this fund, starting in 2015. Through 2021, it started with tax support of $152,000 in 2015, and in the 2021 CIP and budget, we have tax support of $1,075,000. In the course of 20, the past 23 years, I couldn't find additional financial statements, otherwise I would have gone back further. The city has spent $45 million on total street improvement projects, which was funded by slightly under $9 million of interest earned. And in the early years, the interest earnings were sufficient to cover the cost of the street projects that were done. Obviously, the cost of a street project has increased significantly in 23 years. We can no longer just do an amount of construction equal to our interest earnings. Interest rates have also decreased in those 23 years. The other big sources of revenue that have paid for the street projects are roughly $20 million in municipal state aid revenues. Property taxes during the six years that I noted are slightly over $4 million. There have been some special assessments that repaid the costs. And what I found was back in 1999, there were bond proceeds of roughly $2.4 million that were issued, and we spent those proceeds in 2000, the year 2000, to pay for a street improvement project in that year. So I had asked the Finance Commission to consider striking the sentence and replacing it with, "This fund will maintain five to 10 years of construction projects in reserve." And that was the major change in the policy. We struck some other language on page three, which removes Exhibit A and B. And Exhibit A and B starts on page five through page eight. All of that should be struck from the policy and put in the procedures document. We also, under the definitions, increased the capital asset cost to $10,000, so it matches the purchasing policy. And we updated the enterprise fund definition to be what's common practice, which is enterprise funds are primarily fee-supported, not necessarily 100% fee-supported, because we do get grants from time to time and other sources of revenue or per. So those were the main changes to the policy. There is a resolution attached for your consideration. And with that, if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Petrick. And I know one of the potential research projects that was investigated after the, I think we had gotten an email from a resident about the source, the original source of the funds, and you had mentioned that there was bonding that was done for a specific project from 99 to 2000, but that is not the original source of the funding of this fund, the $8 to $12 million.
Correct.
Were you able to track down the history on exactly what the source of that $8 to $12 million was?
I was not able to track it down. I know the financial statements probably exist somewhere in our remote storage, but I couldn't find them.
But suffice it to say that it is not appropriate to use bond funds proceeds to establish an endowment essentially that goes on forever. You have to use those within a period of time.
That is.
For a specific project.
Yes, that is correct. If prior to 1999, bonds were issued, those bond proceeds would have been expended for projects. You cannot, you cannot issue bonded debt to build a rainy day fund or an endowment fund. So that definitely would not have occurred. And quite frankly, the interest environment that existed back in the 90s and early 2000s was significantly better than the interest environment we have had for the last 10 years or so. I clearly remember early in my career, investments at 8% to 10% return, which would make me extremely happy today if I invested as much.
We're getting there. Thank you, Ms. Petrick. And certainly, we're, we'd be interested to hear more from any of our historians locally who might know that. My recollection, and this is, this goes back even before my time, but it seemed to me when I first got involved in city activities and interested in the budget and things, that there was reference to some sort of one-time windfall to the city that was the source of the funds. And I couldn't tell you why or how that happened or what it was, but that's just sort of what I kind of have in the back of my mind. So, which would be consistent with not using bond funds, but obviously it doesn't answer the ultimate question as to exactly where the funds came from. But needless to say, we have had them.
Yeah.
And we have used the interest until there wasn't, wasn't sufficient interest earnings to pay the freight, so to speak.
Correct.
And now we're adjusting.
And quite frankly, the, when the city started implementing tax levy directly into this fund, pretty much corresponds when we saw a significant increase in the cost of street projects. Keeping in mind, we also have to time our projects with the county and state projects. And if the county or state is doing a project, we can't necessarily tell them, oh, wait a minute, we can't do it this year because we have it programmed four years down the road. So what I could find was, you know, a significant increase in the cost and perhaps in the number of projects.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Petrick. And I believe that may have been related to some county turnbacks to the city, which the city has had, well, we got some money from the county to help pay for rehab. We have them now in our lab to take care of. Questions or feedback from the council? Councilmember Willis?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Who might actually know the answer.
With respect to the change here on page two of attachment A, has there been any conversations with Public Works, Public Works Director about kind of this open-ended aspect of it, five to 10 years, construction projects in reserves? Frankly, I don't know what that means. And so I'm wondering if there's been some more detailed conversations as to that and actually developing a forecast and plugging that number in there versus this more open-ended approach.
That was developed utilizing the current capital improvement plan, which the Public Works Department does put together, and we work collectively and collaboratively on the CIP. And so Public Works literally has said to me, how much can we spend, and we'll constrain our projects to whatever number we give them. We currently have about six years of construction projects in reserves right now.
Okay.
And the interesting thing is the current 2023 CIP project that's noted in the CIP may actually get moved to 2024 because the county may not do that project.
Okay. So offhand, your six years of funding there, what does, what is that dollar amount?
$6 million.
Okay. So.
Slightly over.
So what is the advantage of stepping away from a forecast number saying 6 to whatever on the honey side versus what we have here, five to 10 years?
Yeah. We did discuss that because the Finance Commission did ask the same question. The reality is, we don't know what a street project is going to cost.
Okay.
And six years right now might only be three years in a couple of years. And so it was trying to make sure we pegged to a minimum number of years. We do look at the CIP every year as part of our budget process. And we could certainly leave it at the $8 to $10 million. We're short of $8 million right now.
Yeah.
And so that would mean we're out of compliance with the policy. And so either we don't do any street projects for two years, or we would have to start increasing levy support.
Mm-hmm.
And we were already at a 7% levy increase. So that didn't seem like a good idea at this point in time.
Okay. Do we run into any potential issues as far as auditors go, things like that, with having that open-ended?
No.
Versus?
We don't.
Okay.
We don't.
All right. That's all I had?
All right. And just to kind of dovetail on that, if it makes the council more comfortable, we could potentially add a phrase to that language. The fund maintains five to 10 years of construction projects in reserves, as identified in the city-approved CIP or something to that effect, but that's helpful for, for the language being a little less open-ended. I do, I do tend to agree that dollar amounts are a little tougher to put in policies when they're long-term policies.
Right.
Values of, you know, the value of money changes over time. Councilmember Willis, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with that, having some nexus between, okay, what is, what is the, the tool or the function that we're looking to as guidance?
Yes.
I think makes a little more sense than how we have it worded here.
We can certainly add that.
I would agree with that.
All right. Are there other questions or feedback on the proposed changes to the policy? Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right, seeing nobody rushing the table to come forward and speak, nobody participating online still. All right, we'll close public comment on this. And then, does the council wish to take this up at this time with that relatively minor language change, or do we want to bring this back?
I'm fine picking up this time. Define that, say that one more time, so we can make sure we're clear on it before we go.
All right. On page two, the red sentence that's been added, "This fund will..." "This fund will maintain five to 10 years of construction projects in reserves, comma, as identified in the city-approved capital improvement plan."
I agree, except you only have comma.
All right. With that then, if there are no other changes or discussion on the part of the council, we do have the request to adopt the changes to the policy through the resolution and obviously attaching the policy.
So moved.
Second. All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Atton, seconded by Councilmember Graff, to adopt the resolution amending the policy as outlined with the change we just discussed. Discussion of the motion maker of the motion, Councilmember Atton?
I think we've talked through this. I think they all make sense and part of making sure we are running our system in a good way.
Great. A second or Councilmember Graff, discussion?
Yes, I would agree with that, and I want to thank Ms. Petrick because this was very helpful, the background you gave and the discussion. It sort of made sense before, but now it really makes sense. And I understand the, the concept of the, better not having the dollar amount in there, because look at the way inflation has been, and we don't know, every time you go further out to predicting, as stated, it just gets more and more possibilities of inaccuracy. So I'm supporting it.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that policy adjustment is approved. Thank you both to the commission and Finance Director for their work on this. That brings us then to a council action, which is to consider making appointments to the Public Works, Environment and Transportation, and Planning Commissions for terms, both partial terms ending in March of 2024. We have, the tally sheet was provided to the council this afternoon, and we have an idea of where councilmembers, as well as our two chairs, were on these recommendations. And it is corrected on the bench handout. I know there was a small, small error in the, the one that was sent this afternoon in that we had counted a chair choice towards the tally, and that we don't do that necessarily in the counting of the tallies. But with that, I do want to note that we had a tremendous pool of applicants this time around, and I tell you, you folks, you always make it difficult for us. And somehow, we, we worked through it and we figured it out. But, but once again, just to reemphasize that everybody who applied and maybe doesn't get appointed in this round should definitely consider applying again. We have, our, our normal term ending is in March of each year, and so in March of 2023, actually, starting in February, we'll be advertising for those vacancies, and we do encourage folks to try again if you don't get appointed this time. With that, we have one vacancy for a partial term on the PWET Commission and one vacancy for a partial term on the Planning Commission. Does the council wish to make a motion in relation to action to the PWET Commission? Councilmember Atton?
I move Allison Luongo as a choice for the PWET Commission.
Second.
All right. That's been moved by Councilmember Atton, seconded by Councilmember Willis. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Atton is the maker of the motion.
I agree with your statements that there were a number of excellent candidates. Ms. Luongo really stood out in some ways in how she approached her thinking and the information she provided in her background professionally and how she could contribute. So that's why she stood out for me.
All right. As the second or any other discussion?
I would agree with that. I was impressed with her background in transit and spoke very well to that and think will be a, a very good fit for Public Works, Environment and Transportation. And so was actually very impressed with the, more so than I thought with the process. The audio was excellent, and the video this time around was significantly better.
Good.
And the placards there. So observing these offline was very helpful this time around. So thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, we have the motion before us to appoint Ms. Luongo to the Public Works, Environment and Transportation Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now, as to the Planning Commission, Councilmember Graff?
Okay, I'm planning, let me quick, oh, I would nominate Asmus as the person. I don't remember her first name.
Pamela.
Pamela.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff. All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Strong, to appoint Pamela Aspness to the Planning Commission for that partial term. Discussion of the motion maker of the motion, the unexpected maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff.
You know, there was a question asked by the chair, and it just blew me out of the water with her answer. She did it. She was so succinct on that and so clear. Not that the others weren't good either, but she was really, that's what made her stand out to me. And I, I just thought, on the Planning Commission, that kind of thinking is really important. And I think even though she hasn't been on there, she really let me know how she would approach a problem with critical thinking. So I'm supporting her fully.
And as the second, Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. I agree. And I thought she did a fantastic job in understanding the compliance and the limitations within what we work, as much as it can often be a different scenario and how we want things to work. We have a system set up, and she seemed to have a good handle on how that system would operate and how best work within that. So I really appreciated her answer, as, as we all did.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion?
I agree with what they said.
All right. With that, we have the motion before us to appoint Ms. Aspness to the Planning Commission for that partial term vacancy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and that appointment is made. Staff will be following up with all the applicants as to the result of this action this evening. And once again, encourage folks who weren't appointed to consider coming forward again. With that, we would move to future agenda review.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The next meeting is Monday, September 26. And at that meeting, we do have a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. It will also be the meeting where the council is asked to adopt the preliminary levy and budget. October 10 is the next meeting, and at that meeting, you will be asked to appoint youth commissioners to various commissions and accept the civic campus master plan. And then also, the tenant notification ordinance will be before you that evening. That is what we have as of right now.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on the future agenda? Right. Any council initiated items for future agendas or council reports or announcements? Councilmember Strong?
Thank you. In light of some of the actions in other cities, I'd like to propose that we bring forward a resolution making it illegal to possess undocumented catalytic converters. I know it is limited, what we can do as a city, but hopefully we can push on a larger, a larger piece.
All right.
And just, I'd like to make sure we all know that there is a meeting, a public meeting regarding the master campus plan on Thursday at 5:30 here in the chambers.
All right. Councilmember Willis?
This Friday evening, Four Parks is holding its annual fundraiser at the skating center, tapped and uncorked. And so you may have seen some signs around or seen some Facebook postings, et cetera, et cetera. It's a fun event. So come on out and sample some local crafts and food trucks and some games.
Noted. And hopefully, we'll all be there in one form or another. Also, that didn't end up sounding as good as I wanted it to.
A mayor will clearly be in a different form.
We'll wait.
I did want to report from the Nine North organization that we did on Thursday, approve the hiring of Jeff Ongsted as the new executive director. And so he will be starting, I believe, on Wednesday of this week. He was able to, and so we're anxious to get him going. And so he'll be making the rounds, getting to know city staffs in the nine cities, as well as other folks in other organizations. So we're looking forward to, once again, having a executive director on that organization. I know staff was really starting to stress out, because it had been since the, about this time last year. So they are anxious to have their new executive director in place, and that is underway now. With that, if there's no other announcements or communications, the only other item on our agenda this evening is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sent by Councilmember Strong, second by Councilmember Atten. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 6:49.